Good evening. This is the planning board meeting of August 9th, 2016, 7 o'clock. And this meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15. If we could please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we have tonight is discussion and decision for AD Makepeace Company's special permit modification of definitive plan approval to allow a ground-mounted solar power generating a facility of approximately 8.4 megawatts in a residential agricultural district. And Jim is going to be participating remotely tonight. So do we have to call him?
Yes, I'll call him. You usually make a motion to authorize that.
I'll make a motion to authorize remote participation for Jim Hoffman due to he's out for business.
Second. Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Let me give him a call. Hopefully he'll answer.
Probably at the Cubs game.
They usually play in the day.
That's cool that you know that.
I'm from Chicago. I've watched the game from the rooftops.
I'm Jim Hoffman, up at the office.
No.
We'll give him a couple of minutes.
Yeah, we'll give him a couple of minutes. I did send him a text, let him know we would be calling.
We need Jim's vote tonight.
You do have four here, so if we don't have him, you have a super majority.
Yep, alright. So we're gonna try later or...
So you can take something out of order if you want, and we all try him back.
Alright. The only other thing we have is a discussion for the Landmark Center freestanding signs at 40 North Main Street. Maybe we'll do that right now, and then we'll give Jim a call back later and see if he's ready for us. So is anybody here for the Landmark Center freestanding signs at 40 North Main Street? If somebody would like to come down and speak, please?
I'm Doug Bangham, the owner of Carver School of Music. I'm one of about maybe, I don't know, how many? How many businesses over there? Roughly. And I am one of the people that does have what I think you just referred to as a freestanding sign. Carver School of Music.
Yeah, I think we were concerned because the cabinet place came before us and they had their own sign. And we know that there's a, what do we call those signs now?
Markeys.
Markey or what was it?
The directory sign?
Oh, a directory sign.
Yeah.
And we were just wondering why the directory sign wasn't being used.
I see.
So that's why we asked you to come here tonight. Instead of, the original thought for the whole thing was is that we have a directional sign.
Yeah.
And we post all the businesses on that sign, so it would stop everybody from putting 20 signs out onto the lawn.
I see.
Although the lady that did come before us, the applicant, did say that they wanted a larger sign there, so and it just didn't fit the...
Creates a lot of issues.
Yeah.
One thing I would say about that, if it's helpful at all, is that that's a really good point. If you have the directional board out there, the professional-looking board there, and you have that intact, and you have that, you know, all the businesses listed there, it is extremely helpful to the businesses additionally to have visual aids as you go along that area. One thing I want to say is it's been done, and I hope you are noting, is that Anthony Loz, the owner, has put, I mean, I have personally witnessed, a tremendous amount of money and labor into compensating for that issue that you're raising by making sure that that median looks absolutely stellar. I agree, when I first came in, I've been here about 12 years, it did have kind of a junkier feel to it. I agree, and I can see why residents, or yourself, or anybody reasonably would look at that area and go, you know, we gotta make this look a little bit more, you know, better for a number of reasons. But there's been a tremendous, and I'm not exaggerating, just night and day difference when you take a look at that median. I would agree with you a few years ago, but there's been intensive work, I mean, almost every day, a just ridiculous amount of work on that median to make it look fantastic. Have you seen it recently? I mean, it's, it looks fantastic.
I go by there every day. It does. I mean, it's not...
Landscaping, bush, you know?
Yeah, it's not that the place doesn't look good, because it does.
Yeah.
And it has improved, and it's well-maintained every year. It's just a question of how we tackle this discussion with the signs, you know, instead of having a bunch of signs out. I mean, I guess we're gonna maybe have to look at the bylaw?
Well, Mr. Chair, the bylaw is very clear, and I'll agree with you. Since Anthony's owned that building, he's done a tremendous amount of work, not only to that island, but to the building itself.
Very attractive.
And that shows why Anthony's very successful out there. He cares about the community, cares about how his building and his investment has taken place there. There's no question there. The problem that the board faces is the bylaw is very specific. With a multiple occupancy building, he has the one marquee, and he can have some signs on the building. As far as the additional signage that's put out there, if they're temporary, in other words, they're gonna be taken in every night, that he can have. But the ones that, for instance, the cabinet people, even knowing the sign is absolutely gorgeous, it's a permanent sign, so it's in violation of our bylaw. We've had questions about this time again, in the 11 years I've been on this board. It seems that there might be some time to have a great conversation of whether or not we want to tweak that bylaw and change that bylaw. But as it stands today, that's why there is the marquee or the directional one place for all the signage. My biggest concern, not only for Anthony's location, but throughout town, where multiple locations are, is the speed in town.
Yeah.
And it was brought up by the applicant of the cabinet company was that, you know...
The speed limit?
The speed, how fast people drive in town.
Gotcha.
They come around that corner with the dollar stores and where Anthony is, and they're cooking right along. It's hard to see...
Don't they have to slow down in order to read the signs?
Sure. It would be nice if everybody just slowed down, period, and obeyed by the speed limits, but we don't. I go by Anthony's every day, every single day, twice a day, because I live up by there. The problem lies is what the bylaw says today.
So just, I appreciate your help.
Yep.
Just so I understand what you're referring to, you're saying that the speed of vehicles that come down along there is greatly affected by the signage on the median?
No, it's, I'm not saying that, but the dimensions requirements of that particular directional signage, at the speeds that people are going, it's very hard for them to read that you're there.
I...
Or the cabinet guys there, or Anthony's people there. And Anthony has some occupants that are upstairs now. He's taking advantage of our bylaw to have people live above the stores there. There's a great plaza there. I agree that the bylaw should probably be looked at intensively, but as the bylaw stands today, those signs are in violation of the bylaw.
Okay. And not that, you know, the reasons, if they're in violation or not in violation, so to be respectful, is there a way that we can review those bylaws and be able to see? Because you just said yourself, you said, you know, maybe it is time for some kind of review to take a look at the specifics of it. Is there a way that we can be provided with those bylaws and be able to see exactly what you're referring to?
The bylaws are available on the town website, correct?
Okay.
And at town hall, you can look at the signed bylaws and the markeys. And if you needed any clarification, we're always able to answer that for you.
And it would also just be nice to know the reason for the violations in terms of safety or in terms of health issues, things like that. I still don't get it.
It's just what the bylaw reads. The bylaw reads is that a multiple-location facility, in other words, multiple businesses in one, there would be one set area for a directional signage. Otherwise, you would see, I was just mentioning earlier, up at the North Carver, the old Chars Plaza, there's a boatload of signage going on up there that's in violation.
Yeah, I see. Okay. Well, I'm not experienced with these things. I'm not somebody who really is knowledgeable about the process, but is there a way that we can apply for a variance? Because it just seems like, I mean, that, to my mind, it doesn't seem like, I understand, it probably opens a can of worms and problems, period, when you make an exception for one person and then not somebody else. I understand all that. So, I mean, that in and of itself can just be a reason why this needs to stay the way it is. I understand it. But is there any kind of due process that I'm not aware of where I can simply, and the rest of the businesses, not just me, if anybody else can also review what we've talked about today and then respond in some way?
Could they apply to ZVA for a variance of the sign?
I'm not saying we want to.
No, I just want to be clear. I'm just asking for clarification myself.
No, there are provisions for this board to issue special permits for like internally-lit signs or signs of greater dimension, but there's no variance process for signs.
So I guess that answers the question there. The only really way to really look at it, and I don't want to monopolize everybody's time, but is to look at the bylaw itself as a board and try to see if, does it, A, number one, still fit what the town wants for the look of the main street and how we can help our businesses? Is it helping our businesses now the way it sets? I can tell you, yarrow and no. So it's one of those things that you're gonna look at, is we want to help our businesses thrive, we want to help our businesses grow. The way that the bylaw says right now would be only that one directional sign.
Well, you raised a really good point. You raised a really good point, and I would say that to my mind, I can't really say definitively now, I'm the kind of person who likes to weigh things, think about them, really consider all sides of it, which I can't do right now. But off the top of my head, it seems to be a bit of a gross imbalance when you have the businesses who are dependent upon, I mean, A, you'd have to determine, do the signs really greatly benefit those, or how much, to what degree do they benefit the businesses? Cutter Carpets being one of, you know, how many people would be less apt to know about him or be less apt to use the services if the sign wasn't there? You know, that has to be determined. But it seems like an imbalance in terms of what you accomplish by keeping these bylaws in place versus the damage to the businesses, just off the top of my head. I may change my mind tomorrow, but off the top of my head, it seems like, not really a, I won't say not a go-to area, it's a go-to area, but I mean, I would think, I don't want to be the only one speaking here. Jeff, do you think it would be damaging to your business?
I've got a sign out there which was in compliance in 1992 when I put it up. It's still there. I got a permit from the town to put that sign up there. And if we just have our name on that directory, nobody is gonna know we're there. The directory signs are too small for people to read. They're going by at 50 miles an hour, they cannot read all the names in the directory. I've had that sign out since 92. I've updated it, you know, painted it and so forth. And, you know, without that sign, people aren't gonna know where I am. And I'm trying to run a business, and if they can't find me, I'm not gonna be able to do business. So, you know, I don't know if, because my sign's been there and was in compliance, I don't see why I would have to take it down. You know, the bylaws have changed. Yes, but I believe that you'd be grandfathered because you were in compliance and you issued a permit back in 92 or what have you.
Yeah.
That the town or this board had said at the time that we didn't have this other more defined bylaw in place, so you issued that permit for that location.
Right.
And you still own that.
Right.
So you'd be, i.e., grandfathered in that place.
Yeah.
But even for the new guy that just put his sign up, I mean... I understand. No one would know he was there if he didn't have a sign. If you're gonna support businesses in town, people have to know where they are. And without a sign, they don't know. I understand. It's kind of a catch-21 for us also. Yep. So I don't know how many people complained about the signs, but, you know, if one guy's complaining, and it's gonna affect everybody, I mean, you know, why knuckle onto that one guy? All right? Thank you.
That's all I have to say. This is my carpet, by the way.
We like that.
It's lasted quite a while, still looks great.
Did you contact him because of the sign?
Yeah. That was a, in that office deal. We don't do that one.
I know everybody here really well, so I'm trying to, you know...
Stay in business.
Well, not just that, but just weigh, weigh, I'm trying to understand your side of it too. Because you're the expert on your side of it, so I'm trying to figure out what your needs are. But off the top of my head, without knowing that, it just seems like it's been made an awfully attractive area down there. Even though the signs are there, it has really been made attractive. I would feel bad just by the way that he's worked so hard to make that so attractive for so many years. I mean, I've watched him slave and put lots of money into that whole area, make it look so beautiful, and then to still have to have problems with it. It just seems self-defeating.
So you have a sign out there that, do you have a sign out there?
I do as well, yes.
And then now, the cabinet place has a sign out there that doesn't...
Right.
See, the only reason you're here is because it doesn't comply with the bylaw.
Right. To give you the information on that, is that when I first came in, I did consult with Michael Mendoza, and he gave me the dimensions, things like that, and said, you know, if it's a, he specifically said, in my case, it's not a permanent sign, but, you know...
It can be removed.
Can be removed. And I do often do that.
Yeah.
He said, if you, if it's like that, he said, you're fine. And he gave me the specific detailed okay to do that.
Yep.
I think the question we had and the conversation we had with the applicant for the cabinet place was if they could make that sign a portable sign too. That way there, they'd get visibility, but they would comply with the bylaw by having it as a portable sign where they'd have to, you know, take it in every night. I know it's a beautiful sign and it's in the ground.
Yeah, once again, not to be disrespectful, but his sign actually makes the place look nice. I mean, he's got the nicest sign out there. I mean, if his sign was, it's just my opinion, that has no weight beyond my own opinion. But if his sign, I mean, I've been going out there seeing the median, seeing how nice it is, and also putting myself in the shoes of other residents, other people who go by and see this area and go, this place looks fantastic now, one of the reasons why that median looks fantastic is because of that new sign. That's a professional, really great sign. It's small, definitely, I think even smaller than the limited dimensions. If you take that sign out of there, I think the median looks worse.
Do you, Mr. Chair?
That, I applaud his decision to use that particular kind of a sign and to put the money into it that he did and care into that sign, because it makes the place look really that much more professional and not, you know...
And I don't disagree with that at all. I think his sign is very professionally done.
Adds value to the property, I think.
It adds allure to the property, which is great, but he's in violation of a town bylaw, and we can't just say, it's okay.
I understand.
We have to be able to vocalize that, and until the bylaw changes, it's our job to say what the law says, unfortunately. So to change that would be, take a change of the bylaw, bring it to town meeting. No matter how nice it looks, no matter how effective it is, right now he's in violation of the bylaw.
I understand, okay.
And the way that we had recommended, if they could be able to establish it, that it could be removed like yours, on a daily basis, a couple-day basis or whatever, then he would comply with the bylaw for now, until this board and the town approved a change in the bylaw.
It sounds like we have an unfortunate technicality.
We do. We've had this problem before with multiple businesses in town.
Well, I guess the thought we have here is to tell the owners of the properties that, you know, unfortunately, they should have come here and talked to us about the sign. Instead, they put the sign in, and then it becomes our problem.
Waited for reaction.
Yeah. So, I mean, just now, everybody knows that if a new business comes to that complex or to other complexes that do have directional signs, that you just can't stick another sign in the ground. You have to follow the bylaw. But, you know, maybe later on, we should address that, and maybe at the next town meeting, we should take a look at that, maybe. See, if we could do bigger signs, that would make things more visible.
For everybody here, I think that they feel pretty strongly about it. So I think that they would be interested in actually getting support, bringing support in there. And I think there's a lot of strong feelings here. So I think we would like to gather support and go to town meeting.
As far as the elite builders, the cabinetry is involved, and the sign they put up, I would consider that as new business, not old business. These guys have been here for a long time. That's new business. We should apply with today's bylaws or whatever. But Mr. Cutter's been there since 1992, and he's been there 12, 13 years, trying to run his business, trying to stay above of what's going on here. So I appreciate if you can help them out. And the new business with the elite builders there, to take that into consideration as new business. And so the guy established his business. He's been open up for maybe three, four months, been open up. He hasn't even had one customer. So he's trying to do his best to do business here in Carver. So if you take that away from him, he ain't gonna have any. He's gonna close. So he's gonna put people out of business, and then what we gonna go from there? Their place will be empty. It's gonna follow suit throughout the whole complex. That's one thing I can tell you.
You understand our problem.
I do understand it, but it's new business. It's not old business. They've been there for a long time.
I know. And not to jump ahead, four years ago, you spent, four or five years ago, you spent quite a bit of time in front of this board, working with this board to adapt to multiple changes to your facility, which we've seen, as you've seen, have flourished and has become a beautiful complex for this community. You've seen that. You've seen the efforts of your hard work and working with the town to try to make that happen. This is an unforeseen thing, that we know that we have a bylaw that's in place, that we can't, the only way that we can change it is to bring it to town meeting.
I understand that.
Unfortunately, I understand what you're saying. Even before we got to this point, we've had this a couple of times. You can ask Carver Appliance, when they were at the Silo Market, we had that issue with them. We have it again up at where they're located now. They're strongly abusing the bylaw.
I understand that.
To fix it, we have to bring it to town meeting. I'm not gonna speak for this board, but I'm more than willing to look at it, because this town has changed tenfold.
I can see that.
In a very short amount of time.
Exactly.
We'll talk five years. We won't even go back to 20 years ago. Five years. You know, try to help our businesses to stay in here. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to expand, trying to get more, 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 and keep...
The only thing I would respect is if you guys can get, you know, the, you know, with Mr. Cutter and Doug, when it was, you've already been the grandfather, they've already been in there, and the new business, I would pay more attention to what's going on between them putting permanent signs on the complex, because I wasn't even aware until that sign was up there, until the guy put it up and didn't even ask me. So it's not much I can do when the sign's already up. Then it has to do with the board, has to do with his business, his licensing, and then it has to do with the board, with them taking it out or alter it or put it in directory, whatever needs to be done.
Yep.
He is on your directory sign.
Excuse me?
He is on your directory sign, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he is on the directory sign, yeah, correct. But it has to do with the business he has in the garage in the back, which makes cabinets there.
Sure.
It was nothing to do with the showroom. It doesn't do with the showroom. Has to do with the elite builders. Has nothing to do with the kitchen part of it. This is other business he just started. And he's trying to make it here in Carver. He spent so much money inside that place that you have no idea how much money he's spending there. You have no idea. He's just trying to make it. So within the last three, four months that he's been there, he only got one customer, and he didn't make a sale. So what you gonna do? Have you once or while, they put balloons up on that sign that you're referring to, just to attract some attention, and still didn't get no business. So he's just trying, what he got, he's just trying to make it here in Carver. I mean, he likes Carver, he does business here, so I'd like to see him flourish and make money. I understand the sign's not approved by the town, and he was wrong for putting that sign up there. Without my consultant or the board consultant, he should have made extra steps to make it right.
Which I think he still can for now.
But the whole thing, if you guys want to approve of it, you know, take it down.
He can make it mobile for now, until this board comes up with a change. And then if the change is approved by town meeting, then they can come back and apply to have a permanent structure. But there's a process that we have to go in.
I understand that.
You've been many years.
My point is, the whole thing is, like I was just saying, is between these folks here, they're trying to run the business, because they already grandfathered into it. I mean, they've been there for a long time. 92, it's a long time. And they, you know, they've been there, they love Carver, they work here in Carver, they do business here. So I appreciate it, I mean, for them to at least stay there, as Doug is, is teaching children with the music school, is very appreciative. The kids can see the sign, he's doing somewhat good. He could do better. But at least what I would do is, the new business has to do with the cabinet company. That's what I would do. I mean, the place, like you mentioned, the place is nice on the front. We're trying to maintain it. My wife maintains it all the time, maintains it. So... That's my wife Isabel, by the way.
Please come on up.
Yeah, come up and...
That's the one you see in the front, where they're doing all the landscaping, that's her.
I maintain the ground. And just yesterday, I was watering, and I saw this, they're looking for a place, you know, they're looking for the business, I suppose, and they did stop right there. And there was like five cars right in the back. So for me, I think...
On the highway?
Yeah, on the highway, right in front of me. I witnessed that. So I think it's a time for a change, for a bigger, because you're coming around the corner so quickly, and to have the lettering that is just this much, it's not doing it. And I witnessed that, a dead stop, and I was there, you know?
I don't think our intention is to take away the signs for the two people that have been grandfathered. I'm wondering if something like this will work. Since the business has just started, they did put the sign out there. It's not according to our bylaw. But since the, could we look at this thing in a few months, let the sign stand where it is, and then in a few months to see how the business is doing, whether they can now afford to make it a portable sign? And because who knows if the business is still gonna be there in a few months.
I just try to help out as much as I can on their business of it. Like, you know, I've helped both of these folks out. And I've seen a lot of people there, when you take out a sign from the front lawn, I've seen people put them on small trailers, and it's all big and yellow, and they're just packing next to the street. It looks trashy to me.
Yep.
I mean, well, you know that. You've seen that sign, you know what I'm talking about. It looks very trashy. So if somebody, I mean, to put a trailer in the front with a big huge sign on it, it's gonna look nasty to the town. It's not professional, and it's not right. It's not. I mean, I'd like for you to stop by the property, you know, we will, and check out the property, and give your input, and, you know, this guy needs to help to run his business. I mean, if you're gonna close the doors, we're all going down, in a sense. I mean, it's not right. I mean, it's not right, you know? So we're trying to help everybody out.
How about the thought for letting it stay there for a few months? Can we do that, document that and then revisit this thing, see how the business is doing and then we'll see if maybe we should look at these signs and if they're helping the businesses. And we certainly don't want businesses to be going out of business because they don't have signs in front of their place advertising, so.
We go from there, that's it, we go from there. We try to help out, we try to help out the community, trying to help them out, you know? Again, I agree. And I appreciate all the effort that the board has made to maintain the business here in this town here, but it's not easy, it's not. It's not Commerce Way, it's not Walmart, you know, everybody's struggling, it's all mom and pop stores there that are still surviving.
Right.
And Walmart pop stores, you look at Plimpton, they're all closing down, all of them. The car builders, everybody's closing down. All these big stores are taken over. So you're taking away these people that run this business for a long time as a private party, family, it's wrong. They're trying to help this community.
How does anybody else on the board feel about this? Anybody have any other, anything they'd like to say?
At the end of the day, this board didn't write the bylaw, correct? Was anybody even here when that bylaw was created?
I wasn't.
No. And you're the one that said it, no? It can't be changed at this level, correct?
The only, the only thing that I can say is through, by your suggestion, I do believe, and I could be wrong, because my memory isn't the greatest, there's a part in the bylaw that says that they can put up a sign for thirty days and then it has to be removed. It's for like grand openings, specials, stuff like that. Until the bylaw changes, we can't just say you can do whatever, because we're not the enforcement officer, which is a building commissioner who enforces the bylaws, he has to do his job. The only one that does the bylaws is, we can bring a proposal to town meeting, but town meeting would have to change it. It would take town meeting to change what the bylaw says today. And I don't think that anybody on this board wouldn't entertain looking at it and trying to change it, to adapt to what our community is today. I don't think that's a farfetched, and I don't wanna speak for yous, but I don't think that's farfetched. But as it stands today, you can't just leave them up.
Well, we can, we can give them thirty days, though. And they've been there for thirty days, how long has the sign been there? When can we start the thirty days? And then we'll take a look at it again, see how they're doing and see if they could make it, well, then we'll discuss it again, I guess.
I would appreciate if the board would to come out to the property and check it out. It's not a very intrusive sign, it's not like sticking off yellow and huge.
No.
It's a little, well, you've seen that sign, it's only about this big.
It's a, it's a beautiful sign.
It's nice with the calls on, it looks really nice.
And it is attractive to the property and it's, but it's not according to the bylaw, that's the, that's the problem, that's the problem.
Like I said, the businesses, they need help, they need help to make the business, they need help.
I understand.
I mean, it's not Las Vegas, you get all these lights flashing, middle of the line as well, you know what I mean, it's not a, it's not something that's gonna interfere with the community on the way the sign is and flashing lights, there's nothing, there's nothing there. If you go down, you have to get stuck, you don't even see it. You know that, Will. You don't even see it. Let's give them a little, let's give them a little help, give them a little time, come by the property, look at it, and then we go from there. You know, hopefully, you know, this business will do something, I don't know. I just hope this business does well, because you got a lot of money invested in there and I hate to see him go down the drain over a sign, it's kinda, kinda plain. I mean, he has a big truck he has, he has a cube truck he has with his name on the side of it. I don't wanna see him packed over there by the mailboxes in front of it that covers the property. I don't know if you've seen his truck, his truck is huge, big box truck, and it has a name on it. So he packs it in front of the property, the sign comes out, he packs this big truck in front of the property by the mailboxes, now he causes a kind of chaos in the signs and always blocking the people that are doing business there, you get this big box truck in front of the truck, I mean, in front of the building. And it's perfectly legal for him to do that. Like the guy was telling with the yellow signs, the same way. So anything can work backwards, so I'd rather have a small sign that's presentable there and then have that, you kind of, you know, big billboard in front of the building like that, so. I don't know, there's the good and the bad out of it. And nobody can do that, you can get a big trailer and put a big yellow sign on it, I've seen it before with tractor trailers, you put the name aside with it. In Plimpton, you see them all the time, they have big eighteen-wheelers that track that with the name on it, phone number, they're packed right around the building. So, I mean, where do you start? Nobody's complaining about that sign, it's not bothering anybody, nobody's complaining about it.
Anthony, you want me to just leave it there?
No, I don't want you to do that.
I can't.
Wait thirty days, like you said, Bruce said.
I can't even do the thirty days.
Go from there.
I can't even do the thirty days by the law. It's not a mobile sign, it's affixed to the earth.
It's permanent, I heard you.
It's permanent.
I understand that.
You're asking me to do something that I can't do. I hear every word you're saying, we can go around and around and around. The only option for him is to physically have it so that way it moves. The Capa Carter guy has a permit prior to the bylaw, I got that, he's grandfathered. The gentleman for the music thing, that can be removed back and forth, they're supposed to be abiding by the bylaw, moving it in and out. Same with the appliance guy, Carver Appliance. I understand, but until this board and this community changes it, our hands are tied. I'm sorry. We can work on it, though.
Okay, good.
Definitely do that.
I'm looking forward to talking to you and going over the property, whatever you like to do, we'll go over it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, anything you do to help these businesses out in town, regardless if it's down with the Plimpton side, the Williams side, I really appreciate the, I need to see business in this town here, I like that.
We'll work on it.
I just see all the improvements they did on the center of town, with the fire station, the sidewalks look beautiful, I need to see more business here. I'd like to see more business, more buildings going up, I'd like to see that, and try, everybody's thriving. If I don't thrive and he don't thrive, nobody thrives, he's making no money. You know, it's a domino effect on the town itself.
Sure it is.
You know what I mean, so it's nice to have the community help as much as you can, I'm not looking for you to bend out of your way to help them, but at least take some consideration to help these people out, like I.
Absolutely.
And you can talk to Doug, and Doug will tell you all about it. You know what I mean, with the children and stuff, with the concerts, they have the police department, fire department involved in it, and the board to help them, Bob, take them and all that, trying to help local businesses. It means a lot to the kids, myself and him, it means a lot.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm not looking for no favors, but at least taking that into consideration to help the businesses out.
That's exactly.
Whatever you can do. Maybe you talk to the guy who has the cabinet store, talk to him, say, listen, you know, I understand, you know, you're trying to open a business here, maybe you do it this way, maybe you can do it this way. Give him some challenges on how to proceed in his business. We're just trying to help everybody out.
You got it. Okay.
So I guess we're gonna have to have a discussion with the cabinet people and ask them if they could somehow, and I guess we'll have to have a discussion, board here too, about how we could make that sign a portable sign, whether.
That would be up to the cabinet guy to make that a portable sign that'll go in and out, until the bylaw and if the bylaw changes.
I mean, you could take posts, have the sign attached to the post and just lift the sign out and then take it in at night. Would that, would that qualify as a sandwich?
Mobile.
It's a mobile sign, I mean, if you could do something like that.
I appreciate anything you can do for them, I appreciate it. I guess I want to see the business thrive.
I mean, we love your property, I love the way it looks.
Thank you.
And I, and I like that sign, but it just doesn't go with the bylaw. So if we could do something and just attach that sign to some sort of post and so that they could be taken in at night.
Moveable on the side.
Yeah. Until we, you know, and see how the business goes and then, and then also, maybe we could change the bylaw and maybe you can keep the post from the sign, store those away, and if we do change the bylaw, then it can just set the whole thing back up again, but it's gotta be made portable.
I guess I appreciate anything the board can do to bring these businesses up, I appreciate anything.
Well, I think we should probably take a look at the bylaw, I guess, if it's gonna help the business.
I'm there all the time, you know that. I'm there every day. You're doing driveway ceiling and we're doing the flowers, cutting the grass, I'm always there, all the time. Even picking up the trash, I'm always there.
So could you speak to the cabinet?
I haven't talked to, I haven't talked to him lately, I know he was going through, he was going through some stuff with the town, he was telling me for the permits on the signs, but he didn't really get into, I didn't really get into him in a sense, but he's supposed to be back, I think today or tomorrow, he's supposed to be back from his, 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 his kind of meeting he had going on. So probably tomorrow, the next day, I probably gonna see him.
All right.
If he's still around. They usually travel all over the place, they travel.
If he, if he doesn't do it soon, we're gonna have to call him back up.
Okay.
And we'll have to talk.
Well, I have my number, so if you can't get a hold of him.
So just for direction for Anthony, because he is the property owner? You know that you have permits for Yamaki? He's your tenant, so you can relate to him that, you know, you've been in front of this board, you tried to plead your case, which you did a great job. The town's gonna work at changing the bylaw if we can and bring it to town meeting with an acceptable change, if that's what the town wants. But until that time, he's gotta make it mobile. And if you do that, and you're incredibly responsible landlord in this town, an asset to this community, you have been for years, and we'll do our job to try to bring something to town.
I really appreciate it, Will, I really appreciate it.
Okay?
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, all the members on the board, thank you very much for your time.
We thank everybody for you and the other two people that are in your building that, you know, for coming here tonight to talk to us. And, you know, it's, it was a good discussion and something that we should really look into.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, thank you very much.
Have a good night. How are we doing with Jim?
He is ready, he does have to go into a meeting at seven, though, so I'm gonna give him a call right now.
So he's got like twenty minutes, he's in Easton, I mean.
Central, yeah. He's in Central. So everyone has had the motion, so if you want, if you don't wanna necessarily read it word for word, you don't have to.
Has everybody read the motion?
Yeah.
They have.
All right, so in this particular case, since we're on the.
Hi, Jim, can you hear me?
Hi, is it, yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me okay?
Yes. Okay, so Bruce has the motion in front of the board and we're just gonna go through it briefly and have a short discussion.
Okay.
All right, I think everybody's read it, has Jim had time to read the motion?
Jim, have you had a chance to look at the motion? Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Have you had a chance to look at the motion that I emailed over?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay, yeah, so everyone's looked at it.
Does he have any questions, Ryan?
Do you have any questions, Jim?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm fine with everything.
Okay.
All right, does anybody on the board have any, anything to discuss?
No, I'm good with it, I think everything's well. I understand, the decommissioning figure will be added?
Yeah, so, so the estimate for the decommissioning is not available right now, but before those electrical permits issue, that will have to be brought back to the board and you'll have to vote the amount and that bond will have to be posted before the permits can go.
Okay. I'll make a motion with the, what's been presented to us to approve with the findings.
Okay.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, okay, and that was an aye from Jim.
Okay.
Aye from Jim, yep.
Okay, Jim, is it all right if I sign your name on your behalf?
Sure, yep, no problem.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, Jim.
Are you all set?
All set.
Okay, thanks, everybody, bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. All right, we're all set, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to say, but you're, but.
Thank you.
It's ready to go.
I think that's all there really is.
Thank you very much, okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to other business. We have our planning board member notes.
Yes. I just messed up my whole phone. All right, I just wanted to remind everybody, we have a master plan committee meeting coming up on the twenty-second, wow, good, at seven o'clock. I would highly encourage everybody to come, the participants to come, last time we had a quorum issue, we have a lot of work to do, so please come, give us your input, things like what we just went through with our businesses, this is where we get information, trying to help guide the community in the master plan, so please, the twenty-second at seven o'clock, please come, please participate, that's all I got.
Anyone else? Uh, okay, we're going to the minutes of July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, very well detailed.
Correspondents.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I've included one email that I've received in your package and I've actually met, I actually met yesterday with Mr. Jackson and Mr. Massingham. Now, this, this is coming out of the redevelopment authorities' work with the urban renewal plan. Both of these property owners, their homes are in the town of Plimpton, but they, but part of their yards are in the town of Carver, so their property crosses the town boundary. Their property is also split zoned, so on the, on the Plimpton side, they're zoned residential and on the Carver side, they're zoned green business park. Now, if you decide to move forward with this, we, I'll bring all the maps and show you everything, but it's about, it's about fifty thousand square feet, so just over an acre of land. The backyard of Mr. Jackson's house and the driveway, there's like a neck with a driveway off of Montello for Mr. Massingham's house. And what they would like to do is, it's been made clear in the urban renewal plan process that these two properties will never be utilized for any industrial use. They currently have houses on them and there's, there's absolutely no, no intention to use these as part of any industrial subdivision. So what they would like to do is have the property that they own in the town of Carver be rezoned to residential, agricultural. So, so in the event they go to sell their property or they refinance their property, they won't be dealing with this split zoning issue. So I have spoken with them, they are very interested in working with you for the next town meeting in order to do that. I, as your planner, think it makes perfect sense to, to do this, there's absolutely no reason why this land shouldn't be residential, it's, it's two lots with single-family houses on it. And if, if you agree that this is something you'd like to talk about and have hearings about and explore further for town meeting, I'd be happy to draft up the article language and make sure that happens, you know, as part of your, as part of whatever you plan to bring forward to the April town meeting.
Question.
Question. You're saying the April town meeting?
Yeah.
This community has had multiple years in a row of a fall town meeting.
If there's a special town meeting, we can certainly be ready for that.
So, excuse me, so, um, what Marlene has suggested to you guys is absolutely correct. They're kind of in a quagmire and it's, it's the right thing to do. I would encourage this board to, um, do that, I would encourage this board to spearhead that i- issue for them. I think it's the right thing that should be done, they just somehow got into when that was all rezoned. It was just done. Went to the town lines instead of following the property lines. It did, and it didn't follow the property lines and it's just something that, I think that, at the time when it got changed, it was just an oversight or what have you. And now's a great opportunity to fix it, um, not just for the, for these parcels, it's just, it's the right thing to do. So I would encourage us to do that.
Do you see only two pieces of property like that over there or there?
Yes, yes.
I was just thinking, maybe we should notify more residents, but they're the only two.
Yep, they're the only two that cross the town line, um, the, there is another residential property there that. But it's wholly within the town of Carver and he's not expressing any desire to be rezoned, but these two certainly are.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I certainly think that it's a, it's a good idea. I like the idea of, if, if we can get it situated and we can have it just in case there is a fall town meeting, it just makes it cleaner.
So, um, I have drafted up the article language, I've shared it with both of the property owners last night. Um, now pretty much we're just waiting until there's a warrant open. So as soon as there's a warrant open, whether it's a special or an annual, um, we, I'll bring it forward, you can review it, you can vote it onto the warrant. You can hold your hearings and the whole, you know, process. So, but I would like to tell the, to tell the two property owners that they don't need to do it through petition. Um, and that it'll act, that it'll be a planning board sponsored article. If that's okay with you guys.
That's fine. All right, yeah, that's, we have to vote on that or?
No, no, I think.
Just recommend that, just go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
It makes sense. Okay, uh, the next thing is, uh, the next meeting date will be September thirteenth.
So there's nothing on, there's nothing pending on your agenda, so there's no, I don't have any business for you for the August, whatever it would be. Twenty-third, I think. So, um, enjoy your time off.
I think the twenty-third, I'm out anyways, but that's fine. All right. Entertain a motion for adjournment. The only question I would have is, um, Mr. Chair, through you, we have a couple of people in the audience, they've been patiently waiting, I don't know if they had anything. They'd like to discuss something, bring something to our attention, just because. Yeah, did, did you have, are you here just to listen tonight or did you have something to say?
The only thing we have, we're not even sure if we're proponents or opponents. We came over to react to a good and not planning zone conflict over decision, which I take by now, you're not bringing up tonight. Which is fine with me, I can speak to you privately, because not knowing whether we're opponent or opponent, the biggest thing is, I'm a strong believer in government is a law, not men. And if there is a problem like this, it's gotta be handled by law, not, uh, just quick decisions. Because I, by the way, live in fifty-nine-nine self-control building.
Okay, if you wanna, yeah, just give us your name and address, please, and if you wanna continue. And what are you addressing anyway?
Excuse me?
And what do you, what, what are you talking about here?
This is the article that was in on the property off of Ward Street for the new solar panels.
Yeah, we can't talk about that. Oh, we can't talk about that, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Then just as a piece of information, no one in, uh, the South Meadow Village that I know of knew anything about it, we still don't. Uh, and there's only two entrances, it's the South Meadow Village and so ninety percent of it probably goes out Ward Street. So it may affect the, uh, the aesthetics of the, uh, area, uh, decked provincial to a whole five hundred and twenty-three homes. Or it may be something we can't even see because we don't know where it is. So if, uh, either through the board or somewhere we can find out, if this gentleman wants to come down and talk to the people of South Meadow, we'd be glad to do it. But basically, uh, what brought my attention was, you know, a conflict that was going on. And I think I covered it by making the statement that government is a law, it's not men. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming this evening, appreciate it.
That was quick and easy.
I'll make said motion to adjourn. Have a motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
And good night, everyone.